I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The way she is just huge. See, when I had the plans, I thought this was like, one towards the state. Really, if they want to share their spaces, they share. They may place their earnings in Justice Center. You had shared department. Between what banking clerk or they have. Everybody, everybody in the state, I have to be a nation.
Thank you, sorry about that. We'll go on to the approval of the June 11 meeting minutes. Is there any additions or corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to approve the June 11 meeting minutes. All those in favor, say if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Oh, she passes. Our first new agenda item with Susan Cowan, but there she is, thank you. She stuck here. So, go ahead, Susan, if you would, please.
Good morning, I'm Susan Cowan with Baker Tilly. I have the updated components of financial plan for you. I'll go over that briefly this morning. I understand you've also recently gone through a capital improvement plans. I think maybe Susan Reed was here to present that too as well. We have information from that plan incorporated here as well. So you will see some large negative balances in some places, which indicates we put in the capital plan, the capital items that you put in that plan. So if anything, that's a trigger, then we need to look for some alternative funding, maybe for some of these bigger projects. Because some of what would be traditionally the source, the funding for those projects is not really going to be sustainable. So we can touch on some of those as we go through the report. But overall, a lot of those negatives are being caused by capital, capital plans. So I won't go into great detail on each page. We'll hit the high points, call out some things that we need to keep your eye on as we enter budget season. I know you spent a lot of time last year conscientiously looking at items in your budget and that's sort of, you know, this is the preparation for that as well. Because you've got some idea here in this report of what your revenues might potentially look like. And keeping in mind those guardrails, trying to develop budgets that are similar, close to the receipts that you'll bring in for the year. That's the general rule for creating budgets. So you get a little bit of an idea in this report what those receipts might look like. Granted, we don't have some information yet. We don't know for sure what the max levy growth quotient is going to be. We know it will be no more than 4%. We're anticipating it will be 4% again, potentially 3.9%, but no more than 4. We also don't know yet about lit for sure. We always know that lit comes down till the, sort of the end to what it truly ends up being. That those are just items that we have to sort of wait patiently until the DLGF decides to give them to us. So just starting in on the first page, we just have what's called an executive summary, where we look at some of the high points. Look at things like your circuit breaker effect, how much you're losing towards circuit breaker, what the total effect for circuit breaker is for the county. Last year, as a unit, Boone County unit, lost 2.65% to circuit breaker. I shouldn't say last year, this year's, but that's 2024. So this graph shows over the past six or so years, how much you've lost each year. You can see the little red bar at the top is the portion that you're losing to those circuit breaker tax credits. Relatively to the rest of the state, I believe the average is like an 11 to 12% loss. So 2%, 2 to 3%, your fairly low circuit breaker effect. Although, of course, you know, it's always money that you could use, but, but yeah, so you do have some circuit breaker effect, but it's not great. So this year, 2024, you lost almost $400,000 to circuit breaker from your tax levies. The next page has the sort of a pie chart that shows for the county as a whole. Where you, where you come in there, the schools are the big purple chunk. They lose about 30% combined. Cities and towns are about 47%. Then other smaller items like the libraries, townships, then you as a county unit is 6.9% of the total loss for the county, which was 5.7 million. So across all units in the county, there's $5.7 million in uncollected tax revenues due to the circuit breaker effect. On the next page four, we're showing a trend over time, where what's gone on is with your tax rate relative to your net assessed value. There is a inverse relationship between tax rates and net assessed value. As net assessed value goes up, we see tax rates go down. And that's what you'll see here in this graph. Over time, as your assessed value has gone up to its current level of $8.139 million, that that rate has dipped. Now, it's not a big jump from the 19 point, or 0.1930 that it was this year, to that 0.2185 that it was in 2019. But it has declined over time and we would expect to see it to continue to decline as net assessed value goes up. But again, we will generally know net assessed value around the 1st of August. So we can get a good idea of what your tax rate would look like once we know that net assessed value and what the max levy growth will be for the next year.
Susan, if I may?
Sure.
What's the reason, when the assessed value goes up, what's the reason the tax collect goes down?
Because you're spreading roughly the same amount of money. If you think about it, your, your max levy goes up, say maybe 4% a year. If your net assessed value goes up, say maybe 6%, it's a bigger pie to spread that portion of money out over. Now, if the opposite happens and your net assessed value for some reason shrinks, like you lose a large employer or a business closes or something like that, then you're going to see tax rates go the opposite way because you're shrinking the area over which you're spreading that, those tax dollars. So when you have a larger pool to put it across, the rate drops.
Thank you.
And our tax rate relative to the other 91 counties, aren't we like 91st?
You're always in one of the lower ones, yeah.
I think somebody ran a report, but I don't think it was you, was it?
No, I think at least I've referenced it in the past, I believe, but I haven't actually run that. But I know that relatively, looking at other counties, yours is fairly low. Yes. The following page is a fund balances chart. We've just sort of combined the funds that we looked at individually throughout the rest of the report here on this one page. Now, that green guardrail at the top is sort of the happy place. That's, that's like a 50% operating balance. The red one at the bottom is 15. That's sort of a don't cross this far. Ideally, we don't want to below 15. Now, this blue bar is below the red bar. But again, as I indicated, that's largely because of, I think, three funds that have some big potential negative balances, even though you'll have to find other ways to fund those items. So it's just because of the effect of those capital projects mainly that we're seeing this information here. On page six, the top graph, it's a little small, I apologize, but I tried to fit a lot in there, is showing your current budgets and whether they're a deficit budget or not. And then I tried to show why they're a deficit budget. In some cases, it's because this year there's been an additional and maybe there was an encumbrance, maybe there's a large influx of capital, you know, some capital projects have come up, something like that. So of your eight, what we would call major operating budgets, six of them are showing that they're deficit, not meaning that they can't be funded, but meaning that they're using reserves to fund the budget, which happens in a lot of cases and it's definitely not uncommon. For example, your general fund, that's one that is not currently a deficit budget. It's in black by about $17,000. Some of those other ones, again, because of capital. Don't want to have control over. Because of capital and other, you know, large amounts of operating costs, some of them are currently, have a deficit spending. But we can look at the actual ending balances and see what those look like and which ones you might want to look more closely at during the budget process. We have a few suggestions in the consideration section, not something you have to take into account or have to do. They're just things that we notice as we look at your financial information. The first is that you have a CCD fund, but it is slightly under the maximum allowable amount. When I say slightly, I mean it's seven hundredths of a cent, I think below the maximum allowable. But that seven hundredths of a cent, if you chose to reestablish it, would potentially equate to about 70 cents on a tax bill, but could bring you in about $60,000 additional dollars. That's enough for a couple of vehicles or maybe, you know, an internal project of some sort. So that's something you might want to think about for next year. That has to be completed by the 31st, May 31st of the year. So we've just passed that deadline, but something maybe to think about for next year. And once you establish it and get it back to the full amount, it'll, it should not drop again. We'll, you know, keep tabs on it, make sure that the budget gets submitted correctly and it doesn't artificially drop in the future. So then that's one that is outside of your maximum levy. It's a rate-driven fund that's separate from your max levy. So as NAV grows up, NAV grows, it's just a rate applied to that NAV and you would get, as your NAV grows, you'll just bring in more additional revenues.
Wouldn't that, meeting that maximum, you know, seven hundredths of a cent, like, wouldn't that trigger? Like, I know we had until like the 31st hit, but wouldn't it trigger for us?
Well, it's been, it's been at this rate for a few years.
Okay.
And over time, I think it probably at one point you were at the max. But it used to, the DLGF used to apply a trending formula to your CCD fund and they would decrease it slightly each year. So that the theory was that you brought in essentially the same amount of money as your net assessed value grew. But they passed legislation, I think it was two years ago, they got rid of that trending on CCD. So now, once you go through the reestablishment process, which is advertisement in the newspaper, public hearing, vote and adopt, you can reestablish back to that maximum amount and go forth with it from there.
Okay, thank you.
We always put the, you know, get that warning out there, that, not warning, but guide to try to prepare your budget so that your recurring expenses, but not, you know, not those capital items, but your recurring expenses, your day-to-day, your salary, your supplies, your contracts. Those kind of things are matching your receipts that come into a given fund. We just generally put a note in about ARPA money. If you have ARPA money left to spend, that has to be obligated. That doesn't mean just written in a plan. It needs to be obligated via contract or purchase orders by December 31st of this year. And then you have to spend it by December 31st of 2026.
And that number is a little bit off. Actually, the cash balance that you're looking at is about 2.3.
Okay.
The other three is already appropriated.
Okay. So yeah, so if you've already got it, it's under contract, then that's good. So just to make sure, because we don't want to, you know, because if you don't have it spent by December 31st of 26, it goes back to the federal government.
So there's Debbie 2.3 that's there that we can obligate towards something.
That has not been appropriated.
Thank you.
We're going to be hearing more about that later today, though.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of other things we want to bring up, and you may already know, there are some different kinds of lit available to the county. One of them is a judicial lit, which you can use to pay, the county can use to pay for the operation of the state court system within the county. It can't be, there are certain things that cannot be used for the court system, but it can be used for like jailers and court reporters and those individuals that actually are responsible for operating the court system. It is a maximum rate of two tenths of a percent. And it can be implemented in increments of one hundredth of a percent. So you could do, you know, a small rate to help bridge a gap, or you could do a large rate to help fix a huge problem if you had one. So that is something you could do. There's another type of lit, an EMS lit. I know that emergency medical services and ambulance services tend to be a problem across the state for all counties. Previously, the EMS lit could only be taken advantage of by those counties that paid for 100% of the ambulance service in the county. Now, the county does not technically have to be responsible for any of it, but they can levy the EMS lit and use it for, to like contractually give money to the providers within the county. And that's another one that's a two tenths of a percent cap. And you can adopt it. That one, in fact, both of these, I believe, only stay in place for 25 years. So they don't permanently fix a problem, but they can help in a 25-year term. There's also still availability of opportunities through the Inflation Reduction Act or IRA grants. Those basically look at energy, efficient or clean energy products, or projects, I'm sorry. So if you have anything like that going on that you're partnering, that's something worth talking about. And we have a lot of people at Baker Tilly that are very, very well versed in IRA and those grant dollars. So we would be more than happy to talk to you further about IRA if you have, maybe able to talk about those items. The next three pages are simply the assumptions that we use to put the report together. As I mentioned, the first one, there is the maximum levy growth quotient for the year. We don't know yet what that is. We're expecting that to come out any day from the DLGF. Like, it's capped at 4%. We expect it to be the 3.9 or 4. As of right now, we expect it to go back up to normal calculation next year. But we don't know for sure that that will happen because there was an attempt this year. There was legislation introduced that was limited again for '26 and '27, but it was removed from the bill. But we fully expect it to come back up next year. So there may be a limit again next year as well. So keep that in mind as you're looking at levy numbers here. They could be limited again past '25.
Going back to the Inflation Reduction Act, is there a possibility that with the new jail or the new Justice Center that we might have some kind of energy efficiency?
There could certainly be a potential for that, I would think, yes.
Have we done anything with that? I mean, have we talked?
We had.
A lot of times there are private-public partnerships. They're able to take advantage of those. But if you are doing something particularly green or clean energy with that, there may be a way that you could investigate that.
Okay, I mean, okay, I think we should at least ask. All right, sorry, sorry to go back.
Sure, no problem, no problem, no problem. The next block, I saw page eight, talking about assumptions briefly, shows what the net assessed value for the county has been since 2021 and what the estimated ones are currently. Again, you know, that net assessed value sort of helps keep your rates dropping a little bit over the years. Block three just shows how we distributed your maximum levy. The maximum levy are those items that are specifically controlled within the max levy rate. Your general fund, your reassessment fund, your health, your Cune Bridge, those are your max levy funds. Your debt service and CCD funds are separate funds outside of max levy with independent rates. Those other ones, you can kind of shift back and forth. You know, over the years, we've moved money from health to reassessment or general to health. Or with this year, you've reestablished the Cune Bridge fund, so a little more levy will go to Cune Bridge this year. And then it would, so it would shift away from the general, health and the reassessment. And then just how we did the estimates of your revenues going forward. We try not to be overly ambitious in those estimates, we like to be more conservative estimates of your revenues. And then, you know, as things go in the future, if things turn out better, you can always approve more things after the fact through the additional appropriations process. And we consider roughly a basic 3% increase to the budgets that we show here, knowing that those may well be different when they actually come in. So presenting this today in draft format, and after you get your budgets approved, we'll fine tune the revenues a little bit with the budgets that you approved and give you a final of this report, so you can sort of have a growth map to look at. You know, something to compare, how did '24 actually turn out, you know, and then to look on to '25 and go on forward from there. So the first fund that we have on page 11 is your general fund, your largest, most active fund. This is where your general property tax goes, this is where your lit certified shares goes. Like most other counties, you had a rather large influx of interest this year, or in '23. So you have a, if you look on the second page of this, page 12, you'll see that you ended 2023 with a 61% operating balance. So you're ahead of that 15 to 50 sort of band that we like to see you set in. Because you had that extra interest and you had a $2 million lit supplemental distribution last year. You had a $40 million lit supplemental distribution this year. So those, we never know for sure what they're going to be and whether you can count on them. I mean, I think a few years ago, maybe it was $200,000. So just as that lit trust fund grows at the state and they need to distribute that back to units, that's what controls when and how much you get in the lit supplemental. So we're showing this fund maintaining a positive, you know, substantial balance going forward. Last year, you took advantage of some of these funds to do some repairs to the courthouse, one-time things. So those, you would have some ability to look at something like that again this year during budget. I know Debbie's sort of looking at moving some things around, trying to create some other money here to make some other things work. So, but you don't, you're not super tight in your general fund right now. That's obviously something, we keep your eye on going forward and not take for granted by any means. But you didn't have a, you ended up quite decent last year at the end of the year. And then we just have a graph that shows, if you like pictures, but the numbers, the next page is a graph. All of them are set up standardly like this. So the numbers in that picture. The next page is your, oh, I guess I will go back and say, and the numbers we have for the general fund, for those of you that were involved, counsel last summer, remember that you were approved for the three-year levy growth quotient. Last year, you voted to only take a portion of the available growth to sort of control your rate. The assumptions that we made for the general fund this year is that you went ahead and took the additional $200,000 that was available for that levy growth. It's already there. It was, you were eligible to take it. You don't have to do anything to go ahead and levy for it this year, anything additional since you were approved for it last year. But we did, you don't have to, certainly if it comes to the budget and you don't want to take that money or you don't need to take it, you don't have to. It stays there. You're eligible to take it at whatever point you want to. We did assume that you went ahead and did it, so if you know that would make things slightly different. The next is your reassessment fund, another fund within your max levy. This one, we shifted some money around, but we managed to pivot into about 15% operating balance through 2027 based upon these levy numbers, knowing again, those can always change based upon need. The next fund is your, the county health fund, another fund within the maximum levy. This one, we have also shifted some levy around. There was a repayment last year, so their levy was a little bit higher than what they normally get. Didn't completely take all of that away by any means and that can always simply shift it back if there's a need in the health department to keep that. Keep them above that 15% operating balance as well. So if you want to, you know, to make a determination of whether or not the budgets or the spending is balanced or out of balance, if you look at the bar that's green there on the page, that shows the change in fund balance. If it's a positive number, that means you brought in more than you spent in the fund. If it's a negative number, that means you were spending into reserves. You spent more than you brought in. So in this case, in the health fund in '21 and '22, in both years, they added to the bottom line. They, they spent less than they brought in. Then last year, they did spend a little bit more in '23. And then this year in '24, we're anticipating that they will add to the bottom line. But then by shifting a little bit of tax levy away, the next three years, they would be using some reserves, but still have an unacceptable, excuse me, operating balance. Next is your local road and street fund. This one, if you look at that top blue line and index road number two, you can see that those revenues don't grow greatly by any stretch of the imagination. So if, up here, you're only going to be able to handle a budget of around $670,000. So if you're trying to put projects in here, million dollars plus, that's just not going to be feasible. You have some reserves, but not a lot of reserves. So this is one that, it's a capital project fund largely, pardon, it's funded by gas tax. You receive a monthly distribution, but it's not, the revenues don't grow and change greatly in this one on a year-to-year basis. From $655,000 in 2021 to $671,000 anticipated this year. And that one is sort of one that you really just can spend what you have, since it is largely capital projects. The next fund is your motor vehicle highway fund. So currently, your motor vehicle highway dollars are largely being directed towards the restricted fund, the capital project portion of this. Under the basic State Board of Accounts Directive, 50% of your monthly motor vehicle highway dollars would go in this fund and 50% in the restricted fund. But you always have an option to put more towards the restricted fund, which is what Boone County is currently doing. So we've assumed that you're going to continue to do that through 2027 and continue to shift dollars to the capital project side. So this one is showing a negative balance, negative future balances because of that. But that's just something, as you're putting the budgets together and your highway directors creating the plans, you'll know that you'll have to take things from here and find other sources to pay for those since you aren't limiting what's going into this unrestricted fund. The unrestricted fund is where you can make payroll, charge payroll payments. You can do things like buy street signs, buy roadsol. The other one has to be strictly, that restricted fund is only for construction, reconstruction, preservation of roads. So those are all your big capital projects that go on with your roads. So that just, that would, will just entail a shift of budget to other funds over the years.
Is every other county that you work with, I mean, they're all experiencing this, right? So what, are there some ideas that we haven't thought about in terms of that funding that you're seeing?
I haven't seen anything, anybody do anything drastically different. I mean, they take advantage of any grant that they can get their hands on, but, you know, those are few and far to come. You know, few and far too hard to come by, but I had, don't see anybody really doing anything drastically different. A lot of counties, other counties ideal where they're still doing a strict 50-50 split. But other than that, I don't see a lot of differences.
What percentages did you do this base off of?
I'm sorry?
What percentages did you estimate?
I think it's 10 and 90. Because I think you get about $4 million a year in total motor vehicle highway.
Doesn't seem to have, we just changed it last.
We just, yeah, we just.
Oh, you just changed it?
It's a 45-55.
Oh, okay.
But then, don't we have to do something again with that?
You'll have to do it again in January of next year.
Yeah.
So that 45-55, because it's unbalanced at 90, 10, so it'll allow us to, you know, unbalanced for the last.
Okay, then we'll have to change it again for, but I'll give you that percentage for change. Okay.
Kenny, I missed the conference a few weeks ago. Was there any discussion about highway funding and anything?
Just what we're discussing here, that it's going down.
Nothing else.
They didn't have any great silver bullets out there.
Shoot, I was hoping you'd come back with lots of wisdom, guy.
No, because this one doesn't grow much. It stays pretty much along, I mean, you get a larger amount of it annually, but the growth on it is very similar to that local road and street. You don't get a lot.
I'm sorry to digress, but isn't the council association, isn't, aren't there some committees formed right now to talk about potential legislative changes? And if so, where's that?
Yeah. I don't know of any of ourselves, but yes, I know that it's going on. I know the commissioner's association too is discussing this stuff.
Is there any update on that?
No, I don't know anything that's come out of that, if there are any further head up, but that's the only way that they're going to fix it, because I think it was twenty-sixteen, they made a legislative change and you got a lot more in twenty-sixteen. They did like some one-time funding, but then the next year, they immediately changed it and started a whole chunk of it out to go to other, I think the state police got some, so that it dropped back to kind of where it was almost before twenty-sixteen. But yeah, there's, they pushed to fix roads, but they only let you have a lot there for a short, very short period of time before they took it away again. So yeah, that would, that would have to be fixed via some sort of legislative solution. But I don't know the progress of it. So we can refigure the potential revenues when it comes to a bunch of time for that fund, based upon the forty-five, fifty split, or forty-five, fifty-five split. Uh, next is your statewide nine-one-one fund, another one that does not grow generally. Eight hundred and forty-three thousand in twenty-one to eight hundred and fifty-three thousand last year in twenty-twenty-three. This one has a pretty large capital outlay plan in your capital improvement plan for, uh, plan for twenty-twenty-five, which you can see there, Row Twenty-Two is not going to be fundable. So this one will be another one to seek a different source of funding, potentially for that capital plan or for that capital project.
And this is the one that could be funded if you can get the entities to sign an MOU for the communications.
Got it.
In the works.
So that would bring up about a million dollars that would fund communications officials office.
The next fund is your food and beverage tax fund. This one is one that you, annually, the receipts are growing, they're not growing a lot, but they've gone from about a million dollars in twenty-twenty-one to, it looks like maybe by annualization, about one point seven to one point eight million this year, and it could be more, you know, as more restaurants come online, that can always grow. This one has kind of had budgets that have traditionally been over that amount of the revenue. So it, we're showing some, what could be negative balances. There was a rather large encumbrance there from twenty-three into twenty-four, you know, those encumbrances. If that happens, maybe it's that, obviously, the project is backed off and it wouldn't. But, um, those, those capital estimates are also from the capital improvement plan from twenty-five to twenty-seven. You can see again, they're three million plus, or three million-ish plus. If they're not, we would not anticipate that those would be fundable.
I have a, I have a random question. When you, for food and beverage, does that come into effect if you have a, um, large-scale company, you know, that comes and has like their own onsite, like catering?
Cafeteria catering? I'm not sure. I'm not-
If they, if they outsource it?
Potentially if they outsourced it, but I'm not aware of that happening anyplace other than a main for standard restaurants. We don't know for sure.
All right. Yeah, caught my drift.
I'll, I'll guess around and see if anybody knows how that works for sure.
You mentioned more restaurants coming online. Isn't it more about, uh, how many more people are going to be entering the county? And, uh, you know, the five, the five thousand-
More construction workers that- Accommodation.
The five thousand construction workers that- Right. More, the people that are moving here because of leave, I mean, has anybody done a projection? And I'm, I'm not suggesting Baker Tilly has, but has anybody in the county looked at that, Kenny?
And my, my other question is, how does-
It only has our own cafeteria at that place.
Well, that's the thing, but they're bringing, yeah. And what does this do to food trucks in particular? Do, do they pay on this?
I thought they did, because it's part of the tax. If you, if you're a food vendor-
If you're selling food.
In the, in the county that has, there's those beverage taxes, yeah.
Okay.
There's those, right.
Okay.
And I'll add that with respect to all the conversation in the food industry here in Boone County. Not only does it help Boone County on the whole, but it also puts a strain on the health department, knowing that that health department has to-
Right.
Have every one of those inspected. And how many do we have? Two, two and a half inspectors? You love the growth. You want to make sure everybody's safe.
The next fund on page twenty-six is your lit public safety fund. This one, I tried to go through their capital improvement plan and pull up those items that are normally in the budget and that we could have taken into account in the annual budget growth. But there are still some capital items there for this fund. This is another one that sort of walks a bit of a balance every year, trying to stay on the positive side. As it sits right now, it looks like it may not be, again, that's because of a fairly large encumbrance, really rather than any capital plans for this year. Did, did county go ahead and adopt a cash balance policy? Like that you're going to maintain certain levels of operating balance and anything you, it was discussed, okay. I hadn't talked to Susan Reed, so I didn't know if that was adopted or not. Okay. So this, I, but this one is just, you know, when it comes to budget time, we always have to look at the shares for potential revenues the rest of the year and then compare those to what the budget is to make sure that those would be covered. Then we have your lit correctional facility that's looking ahead, the whole page is on page eight. So you have some, uh, you have some of these rental payments here for the jail facility, but now you're in, into a period where you can use this for operations. So this one can be used going forward. You just put this one in place and start collecting the lit dollars in twenty-twenty-three for this fund. Uh, next is your cumulative bridge fund. This is another one that largely because of, you know, it's a capital fund, it's cumulative bridge capital. We just, uh, like I mentioned, you reestablished, we just reestablished this fund this year. So I am showing more levies shifted here in twenty-five, because that, a reestablishment this year is for pay twenty-four, or twenty-four, pay twenty-five. So that's why there's an influx there of levy online too between twenty-four and twenty-five.
But you guys can also change that. You cannot approve to do that.
Yeah, they, I mean, that, that, they've just raised the max that they can get, but it's up to you to approve them ultimately, what, getting, receiving that money.
Gotcha.
Since it's in the maximum levy, if you chose to limit it, maybe go back to the general fund or to the health or to the reassessment or something like that. Uh, then you have your CCD fund, the one we, you know, discussed earlier about that slight upcasing rate. Based upon, there was not a lot of things in the capital plan for this one, but if you look at the potential balance in twenty-twenty-seven, this would, could potentially be someplace that you could look for some of these projects. Because it's, you, you know, it's, like I said, it's capital, that's what it's meant to be used for. So unless the budget increases, you'll continue to accrue, accrue a balance there, but you really just need to use it for your capital. So.
And enough's a small amount. Did you already project your capital to sixty thousand?
I did put that in here. No, I did not put that in here. But then, you know, if it's sixty thousand this year, by, in four years, it's two hundred, you know, split million dollars. So over time, since it's a fairly small step to do, to get, you know, since it's a couple vehicles in here maybe or something. So, but no, that, that's not currently in here.
So on the next page, on thirty-three, it shows six point eight million. So this would, I mean, six point eight million, which is well above the fifty percent fund balance. So this would be one of our pots to look at, right?
Yes, yes. This is something you could look at, funding some of those other items potentially.
One-time capital kind of project.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this, this is, other than potentially, I've seen it used for IT contracts, generally it is one-time type projects. It's to redo a room in the courthouse or to redo-
Right.
A building or something like that, a roof. It's not things that are-
Right.
Same every year. But it's still the, having to pull it out from your general fund or, or other funds. Uh, then next we have that motor vehicle highway strictly fund. So this one, when you shift away based upon the change that you just made and a potential change next year, the balance will probably not look as positive as this one does. It's very, it's not greatly positive by twenty-twenty-seven, but it is showing positive balance. So that will change. Um, then next is your riverboat fund. I believe in the capital improvement plan, she referenced using this fund, but you don't have a lot here to use, unfortunately.
Mike's thing is destiny.
There's not much you're to pick from at all. So, um, yeah, so this one, um, has a, has a couple things you can use in twenty-two, but it's not going to grow. They decreased it a couple of years ago, and I expect it to, if anything, it'll get smaller for the, the counties that don't have riverboats. Uh, then we show your rainy day fund on page thirty-eight. Nothing really to comment here, other than the fact that you haven't made a distribution into your rainy day fund recently. Um, the, the most recent one fell off this report, I think it was in twenty-twenty. So, um, that's something to think about potentially too, if you want to try to add anything to your rainy day fund.
And then, um, like, what's the standard for, um, looking at that balance versus what total? To, to determine what's, um, what's reasonable?
What's appropriate to have there?
Yeah.
A lot of other counties, or I know counties that are actively looking at, you know, trying to set up savings there, they, they try to double what's in the balance of their general fund. So their, their goal is, if they end their year with their general fund at eighteen million dollars, their goal is to try to have eighteen million dollars in their rainy day fund. So other ones, I know other counties don't make deposits at all into their rainy day fund. So.
So for us?
So for, you, you may determine, okay, maybe if you want to look at what fifteen percent of your operating would be in your general fund, make that your goal?
Which would be what, Debbie?
It's on the, yeah.
I just, you, you guys can help me though. Like, what's the number?
You know, like grant, you can tell what fifteen percent would be, um, it'd be a round, four, four plus million. And you've got-
Which is what we've got.
Oh, you've got, so if you, or if you wanted to do a quarter, or if you wanted to do a quarter of all your levy, you know, there's any one of a number of different benchmarks you could use for that.
I think the, I think the thing with this was, was it 'oh eight, oh nine', where we hit that financial crisis? I know the council, if I'm not mistaken, Steve took a very conservative approach to not try to lay anyone out.
Yeah.
I think thinking about that, kind of as an approach maybe.
About twelve billion in rainy day down to what we've got now.
But that was the, that was kind of the, what popped us up.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken.
We received a large amount too from the lawsuit.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought there was, okay.
Yeah, I thought we received a very large amount from the lawsuit. This is like before all of us. That was entering a day and used.
I, I thought it was just some sort of lit money.
Maybe that's what it was. It might have been a lit supplemental.
Yeah, it was a lit supplemental where I remember it.
That's what got us up so high to begin with. Yeah.
Yeah, I think my, yeah, my thought process too is like, whatever that balance is, it's like thinking through like, God forbid, like if we hit some-
Yeah.
Turmoil, then typically you're going to sell out business.
Something you're not planning on.
Something you're not planning on.
Or something like that. I know a county that had a tornado last year was able to use their rainy day fund to sort of help get through disaster cleanup till FEMA was able to come in and assist.
So if we had a cash balance, um, if we had one of those cash balance policies that we, fifteen percent of the operating fund is generally where we've been the last several years. Is that right, Debbie? I mean, so the unwritten rule would be that-
Last year, last year, I think we did that at twenty-two, twenty-three percent.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense for what this-
But that's also something that you could look at your interest, that the treasurer is bringing in and possibly put your interest in your rainy day.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next fund that we have up page thirty-nine is your debt service fund. That's the separate tax levy that you're using to kick in those road and bridge bonds. I just want to call your attention, that one would be matured, and those would be matured and paid off in twenty-six. So you, the last year, you expected levy under the current bond issuance would be in twenty-twenty-six. After that, you would not have any more for that tax levy coming in, unless you choose to issue another round of road and bridge bonds. You would want to time those to sort of pick up as these are dropping off, to either maintain that rate or to replace the cash, you know, for your, if there are any list of road and bridge projects.
And also for our credit rating, does that impact that, the rate at which we reissue new bonds or not?
Kind of. I mean, like continuing to have credit that you are handling responsibly is always going to help your rating. And so when we drop it, let it hang for you for a while and then try to pick it back up. Sometimes that's more than the cost of maintaining it.
Thank you.
So you would want to probably start thinking next year, get into this, uh, start the process of issuing bonds. The last section of the report, that was the last actual fund that we analyzed. The last section of the report is a lot of sort of summary information. We have a listing there of what your different funds can be used for. Because each fund, except for the general fund, that's a fund that can be used for anything, each, the money that goes into each fund has a specific purpose. So sometimes everybody says, well, wait a minute, we've got all this money, why can't we spend that here? Well, it's because you can't just randomly take health department money and spend it on roads, or you can't use bridge money to, to supplement the courts. And each fund has its own separate purpose. And this, uh, there's three pages here that try to highlight your funds and what those funds are used to be paid for. Uh, then we have a, a page that shows your current lit rate, this is page forty-four. You can have up to a two and a half percent rate. You currently have one percent for certified shares. You have a half percent for public safety, and then you have two tenths of a percent for your correctional jail facility lift. So you are, and that current rate is one point seven, so you are under your maximum rate of two point five for local income tax. The next three pages just show your budget to actual performance for the last three years. So you can kind of look and see, generally we save a budget, especially if it's one of your main operating. When we say main operating, we're talking about the ones that you're paying salary from and paying a lot of your day-to-day operating expenses. So those would be your lit public safety, your general fund, your health department fund, where your motor vehicle highway salaries are being paid from. So if you're about a ninety-five or even ninety percent of the budget, or even a hundred, either way, that's, those are usually good budgets. If you're only spending fifty percent of a budget, maybe that wasn't as, as tied with budget as it could have been, or if you're going way over, maybe something was left off and you didn't consider anything that needed to be added to that budget. So a lot of times you'll see capital project budgets look a little weird, because you'll say, oh, well, you know, I didn't spend anything. Well, that's because maybe the project had to get postponed. A lot of different things can happen. But you can really tell more by looking at those operating funds and what's going on with those. On the, like I said, page forty-eight, we included the page from the company, your capital improvement plan. This is, that's the same information you saw on the plan that Susan Reed gave you, just have it here again for reference. Then on page fifty, we have a summary of ending balances of all the other. So if you want to look at sort of all in one place at one time, compare each other. Does it have to be under twenty-three? Does everything positive? Does everything have positive balances? Yes, all of these months had positive balances at the end of twenty-three. And then you sort of see going forward, the ones that we showed dropping. But again, like I said, that's largely from that, that influx of capital projects. And we ended with just the schedule of the outstanding debt the county currently has and then the payments that we'll be making for those debts in upcoming years. Were there any other questions? I'm going to see in this first, probably part of the, if we have, if we have other questions afterwards, please go for your lead out. If you guys have any answer questions.
Can you move on, please?
They've got a couple of, they can, yeah, they can stay at the council.
Awesome. Just want to thank you for putting this together and working with us. But it's something that as council members, when we go into the budget, we need to have this too, so we can look back at and, and understand, you know, what's in this fund and stuff. So, and help us through that.
Yeah, thank you. Great information.
You're very welcome. Very welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Susan. But one, one quick question if I may. You guys worked real hard to put this thing together. That being said, without having a crystal ball, would you expect that Boone County is in real good shape?
I would say you're in good shape, yeah. I mean, I know you have challenges, but I think you, you, I'm, you know, obviously I've said in your budget meetings for the past few years, I know you've worked really hard to make the decisions on your budget and try to create yourself a roadmap for the year. The drive of the budget process is it's just one year at a time. This helps you look out a little bit further. If we make this decision- If we make this decision in twenty-five, what's going to happen in twenty-seven?
Yeah.
So that's kind of a way to help you work at that, and that's, this is a very fiscally responsible step for you to take and to continue to have this report and get it updated annually. That's one thing that bond issuing agencies look at, because they consider this, you know, this is a financial planning to be chosen to undertake to assist you in your goals.
Well, thanks again for your hard work, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next item, new business, will be Lisa Rutter.
This is Rutter, my clerk, I'm here to request two stipends, originally for my first deputy, I was advised by HR that since she could work between thirty-five and forty hours, we get paid for that overtime during elections because it wasn't considered technically overtime. So that's what we did, and then at the meeting in May, Erin was advised by your counsel, is that correct Erin?
Yes.
Your boss, like, no, that, that could not grow, but we would need to do it a second. So I presented to you the hours that she worked, if she was a normal employee standard, we would have paid her one thousand seventy dollars and eight cents. And I'm proposing that twice a year during election years, unlike, she'd get the five hundred dollars twice a year, and that will come, I have the funding for that, so that will come out of.
Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's ten twenty-two. Yes, my own watch.
I did talk to Lisa about this, and I think it's something that we need to, to talk about, and I told Lisa that I really would like to discuss it during the budget hearings and also take the information that she has. So make sure that we can digest that and understand the fulling, but I would like to definitely take it back up during the budget hearing, if it's up to the council, it's council's decision on what you guys want to do.
Yeah.
Broken jewelry, if you choose to proceed with this, this is going to be compensations if you have to make any change to your salary bonuses. Probably still look at it a month or year to do that because you can't pay anybody any compensation that's not reflected in your salary bonuses, so.
Thank you.
I did speak to HR before I came over here, and commissioners do mandate that all first deputies be exempt. But they also have to clock in and they don't really qualify for anything else, so I don't really get the point of.
Yeah, I don't completely understand that.
I don't either, but.
That's some, something else that we need to discuss, understand fully.
Yeah.
They're saying because they clock in and they don't qualify.
They clock in and they won PTO, is that?
Is that the primary reason for, it's just PTO group? Okay, all right, yeah, I would, I guess I figured Kenny as well, I know we talked a little bit, is just look at it overall and any additional stipends that are paid, kind of like take that into totality. And then to figure out what's the best way from a scheduling standpoint to either pay them, like all at once, see what the actual total is, and then just really, I think there's some other stipends that have been issued as part of a legislative kind of icy code that others can get as well, other offices. I'd love to take them all under consideration at the same time during like the budget workshop, but I think we have, at the latest, went to the end of the year to pass this to make sure that they're paid, because this, this is for an election mainly.
Yeah, this is for the May election.
Okay.
The statute was for the general election itself.
Yes, the general, yeah, so any year that there's a general election, so it could be paid throughout, but it just took effect July first.
Right. Throughout. For the general.
This stipend for voter registration.
Okay.
So with that being said, is there a motion, is there a motion to approve or a motion to put it?
I would motion that we table this until we have discussion during the budget workshop and then revisit it to figure out kind of where everything else kind of stands and then come back and visit it.
It's been properly moved, is there a second to table this to the budget workshop?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to table this to the budget workshop, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign, thank you, Lisa.
And before, and before you leave, if there are any other stipends that are like, that need to be included, can you just give us a full list and say, hey, any stipends that she would need to be paid or anybody, like that would help us during the budget workshop? Just, I hear all the stipends that need to be or should be paid that are included and the ones that are current, like currently paid.
This is the only stipend.
Is that the only one, okay, all right.
Well, you currently get a lunch award and then another voter registration, sorry, I get, if that, do you mean new ones or?
Exists all of them, any of them.
Any, any and all, so we something else.
I guess for me that way, I don't know how you are, it would have. Yeah, no, all the stipends. Yeah, I think so.
They're on the salary ordinance.
Okay.
I can't remember when we do stipends, because we have the, is it eighty percent, first deputies paid eighty percent of elected official, do we do that with the stipends as well?
Eighty percent of the stipend?
No.
No, we don't, okay, I can remember if we did that with stipends.
Yeah, just the salary itself is eighty percent, yeah, so, so any stipends, an elected official, it doesn't help the second deputy.
Yeah. That's, well, that's, I just wanted to make sure, because if we were talking about the five hundred, but then there would also be eighty percent of the new statutory one, that's what I was trying to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lisa, I want to make sure I understand it correctly, you're asking for a thousand dollars, twice, five hundred dollars, twice, a thousand dollars, that's what we're going to discuss in those budget hearings, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thousand dollars, thank you.
For her first deputy, but then there's also a twenty-five hundred dollar one, this is new to Lisa as of July.
An icy code.
I was, if an elected official has a stipend, we're not paying first deputy eighty percent, okay, that's what I wanted to do.
That's what I was trying to, okay.
That's what I wanted to do.
Usually paid separately from their salaries.
Okay.
All right, that makes, that helps, okay.
Thank you.
That's how they've always been on the salary ordinance, I don't know if they are or not, that's something I can go through.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify something too.
Yeah, they've always been listed that way, I don't know, all against the rest, they move on to the rest.
Thank you Lisa.
Thanks Lisa. Jim Caldwell.
Hello, I'm Jim Caldwell, Chief of Ad events Department, I'm here representing Thorntown Ad events and GM Tenor, requesting, there's a House Bill fourteen fifty-four that you can add a small amount of that tax on to, that we're just volunteer department. The problem is with what's going on in the county right now, relief project, I know you guys get hard to turn, put a lot of stress on the west side of the county. Volunteer department is hard to get to start with, I don't have any way to keep, I have any money for them, I have money to tramp, I have money to buy them equipment, but I have any pensions or budgets that I can give. Some of the things that happen is when I bring a new guy on and send him into a house for a fire, it's about twelve, fifteen thousand dollars invested. That's a, that's a lot of money invested, I can keep that person coming back every year for the next ten or fifteen years to get the payback on. Recently we had a really bad accident on thirty-two, had two, brand new apartment, first time ever on fire, some eyes crashed head on, railroad truck doors out, these young guys pulled the bodies out of the truck. I had to take crosses in the benefit of our events, we don't have a department to take care of that, how do I keep those guys? I don't have anything to give, I don't have a money to give, I don't have a pension to give, all you can do is just say you did a good job, that's not good enough anymore. Today's you've got to help somebody a little bit more financially to make it, you can add his tax on, it's a one tenth of percent, five tenths of percent. And it is divided out only on the properties, the buildings inside the townships, so, Washington Township, Sioux Creek Township, Jackson, Jefferson Township, tax base is not enough to fund all the things we need to do. Pretty much with my department, I live off of grants, like I've got a great grant prior, after that, I don't make money for anything else, I can't give these guys anything other than just a pat on the back, and that's not good enough these days. It's hard enough to recruit them alone, so I'm asking to approve this tax so that I can keep my apartment, so four and ten feet, two thirds, James County, feet thirds, Thorntown's about five down, I'm about ten down, North Town's about ten down. And part of the problem is we just can't keep them, I don't have anything to offer long-term. Any questions?
Did you say it's fifteen fifty-four?
Fourteen, fourteen.
Fourteen fifty-four, yeah.
Fourteen.
You might mention the amount of hours they put in before they actually, classroom.
The thing was, it was just our partner one and two, they put in at least close to four or five hundred hours of training, and right now, by, like I'm paying for a guy to go to Thorntown, it's twelve hundred dollars. How do I keep that guy, I spend that much money on his gear and everything up, training, then how do I keep him? I just don't have anything to offer, no pension plan, so money to give, nothing. That's just for our partner one and two, if they want to become the MTS, that's another, probably close to five hundred to a thousand hours, depending on where they go with the classes. It's really tough. I mean, I've been doing this for fifty-three years, I want to retire, but I can't find anybody to take my place because there's nothing to offer with what I do, so I show them, they don't want, too hard.
Mr. Caldwell, you was here last fall, November, weren't you, and just to.
Ask you about the same thing, yes, and they told me to come back before the budget, and that's why I'm here now.
Yeah, exactly, I just wanted to remind everybody that you, you did come last fall.
Anything, anything I can do to, to improve the quality of the search fire service, questions I would, Kenny, I'm all for, anything I can do to help my young guys stay, I'm all for that, I need replacement.
And I will also say, you entertained John and I, what, three or four, maybe four months ago.
March.
And he provided some information that he's not going to go through today, but I'm going to scan this in and send it to everybody on the council, just in terms of some more fact and data points.
What it costs to be a volunteer department, what it costs, what it costs to provide a volunteer department, another thing that's just coming up, our insurance come to give us a warning that National Park Protection Agency, which is a standard, we have to go by nationally, it's not a standard Indiana, but it's been adopted by OSHA. When that happens, we won't have enough money to fund all the stuff that OSHA wants, we can't come close. I mean, I can do, right now I'm about seventy percent of it, so a lot of the stuff I can, one is medical screening for my guys, those type of things. I can do the driver's training, I can do the standard operating guidelines, all the other stuff, a lot of this stuff is, insurance companies, LSO, which is an insurance rating agency. We get tested every four to five years about how good our car to permit tar, and there's a lot of requirements on it, it took me about six months to balance it all for. And Thorntown, James County, Ad events have to do the same, well, then Zionville, Whitestown also have to. Example is if we had to fund a career department in Jefferson Township, it would cost eight and a half million dollars. Volunteer department saved the state of Indiana four point two million dollars a year. So, we're cheap, keep us, figure a way, let me suck and keep you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Caldwell.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, I'll send it out.
Any questions?
Jewel, our next item is the amendment for the salary ordinance, and since we've put that, postponed that until the budget hearings, do we need to have a motion there or just go to the next agenda item?
Since it's on your agenda, go ahead and go ahead and follow.
Okay, thank you.
If that's what that was.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the salary amendment for the clerk stipend, so we tabled that until the budget hearings, so do we have a motion to table the salary amendment for the clerk to the budget hearings also?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, thank you. On the highway office staff, we, we made that approval last month, so is there anything, do we need?
We're just updating the salary ordinance, we had changed it previous to recognize to full-time, we're changing it back to the way it was previously, to one full-time and one part-time. That's, I just need a vote to approve that change back to the original line.
Which, that's what we, we made motion last month, but now it's to change the salary, so.
Correct.
Do we have the, a motion to amend the salary ordinance for the highway office to reflect what we did last month?
I'll make that motion to change.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to change the salary ordinance to reflect what our motion was last month, all those in favor of this, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign, thank you. We, we've got a couple of reapproves next on the agenda, the first is the ARP Grassi, Grassi Branch.
My name is Carol Cunningham for Phoenix Surveyor, I'm here to request that we move transfer six hundred thousand out of the Grassi Branch in our fund to the TruHune project. So we are finished with the Grassi Branch, and we have some extra there, and we're running low on the TruHune project, so we're just getting that one kicked off, so we're just asking to move that six hundred thousand over.
Is there any questions, discussion? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to transfer the funds for Grassi Branch of six hundred thousand dollars to the TruHune project, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign, thank you. The prosecutor, in the overtime line, there's Ken.
Yeah, thank you, who kind of prosecutor, Kent Eastwood, we discovered like a clerical error in our time sheet reporting, it was, it was, a person did thirty-six hours in one week and then thirty-four in the next, it's done the over two week period, that one extra hour, it was taken in from overtime as sort of the regular salary line. We have some other projects coming up, most probably is when I talk with the council and millions of our footprint of, on our servers. So I need, I want to, normally I wouldn't worry about two hundred and fifty dollars in overtime, but I kind of want to have that for this project to get this done by the end of the year, so I was asking that we appropriate that back in. We fixed the mistake going forward, so it's going to be an issue again.
Sounds good. Any further discussion or questions for Ken? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for the prosecutor to move those two hundred sixty-four dollars and sixteen cents back to the line, so. Any further discussion, if not, all those in favor of the motion, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, thank you Ken.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a, next is the additional request that we have from Superior Two, it looks like Debbie's going to speak on this one.
Yes, so Judge Pettit is needing us to issue him an additional for med psych. This is something that they always have trouble trying to budget, they try to budget low, but then depending on court cases throughout the year, if they are required to do psych tests, they don't have a choice, they, they have to do them and they have to pay for them. So that's what this is, and they're hoping the seventy-five hundred will get them to the end of the year.
Anybody have any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the seventy-five hundred dollars?
I make a motion to approve the seventy-five hundred.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded for Superior Two to ask for an additional, approve an additional seventy-five hundred dollars, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, thank you. Next is, for his own business, is a timeline for our, our budget, so the budget will start August the thirteenth, at a regular meeting and go into the budget. And we've put down the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth is what we're putting on our schedule for discussion on the budget, anything else to add to that Debbie?
Depending on the August council meeting, we'll tentatively start our budget session at nine thirty.
So we're also going to get together, work with Debbie on getting a list of, of, of who we're going to meet with and when, so that we can get that out to all the elected officials and department heads too, so we're working on trying to get that out. Public comment? Public comment? Any take from the board?
I just wanted to say that the money that I'm asking for, I'm not asking for to me, from the general budget, I have it in my budget.
Thank you. Anything else?
Moving to the jury.
It's been properly moved and seconded.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to the jury. All those in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
One question. Who, who's the prosecutor's hairstylist?
Proper question after we close, though.
Oh, he was at the new jail testing out the new barber chairs.
I thought you were at the...